Welcome to the ECB, ladies and gentlemen, and to this public hearing on the draft addendum to the ECB guidance to banks on non-performing loans. I'm Connie Lotze of the ECB's Communications Department. So this hearing is being webcast live and a transcript of it will be posted on our website later on. The consultation on the addendum, as you know, will end at midnight on December 8th, so you can still submit comments inviting us as well until then. Let me introduce our speakers. Next to me is Danielle Nui, the Chair of the ECB Supervisory Board; next to her Sharon Donnelly, Deputy Governor in the Central Bank of Ireland and Chair of the ECB's High Level Group on NPLs. To Sharon's right is Anne Fröling, the ECB Head of Section and part of the team coordinating the work on NPL guidance. And last but not least, to the far right is Sharon Finn, ECB Advisor and a member of the NPL Task Force Project Team. Ms. Nui and Ms. Donnelly will make introductory statements before we will turn to the floor to your questions and comments. Danielle, please.
Thank you, Connie. Good morning to all of you, or also I should say good afternoon. We are afternoon indeed. It's a pleasure to welcome you to today's public hearing here at the ECB in Frankfurt. This event is part of a public consultation on the draft addendum to our guidance to banks on non-performing exposures. As expected, there is a lot of interest in this hearing. Non-performing loans, NPLs for short, have become one of the most widely discussed issues in the European banking sector. This is not a surprise considering the sheer volumes of NPLs, which reach around 1 trillion euro at this peak. As a banking supervisor, I welcome the fact that NPLs receive so much attention. After all, they do pose a major problem. First of all, they wait on the balance sheet of banks curbing their profits. That's a problem as European banks suffer from a lack of profitability anyway. Second, NPLs are distracting and represent a drain on resources. For instance, they absorb the time and energy of bank staff on management, who could be employed more usefully on tasks such as adapting their bank's business model to the fast-changing environment. Third, NPL undermine trust in a bank. How much trust would markets and investors have in a bank that is weighed down by high stocks of NPLs? In short, high levels of NPLs weaken a bank and keep it from doing its job. And that job is broadly speaking to finance the economy. As the President of the ECB stated at the ECB Forum on Banking Supervision on 7 November, I quote, "Internal ECB analysis shows that over recent years, banks with high stocks of NPLs have consistently lent less than banks with better credit quality, therefore providing less support to firms on households." End of quotation. So at the end of the day, NPLs are not just a problem for the affected banks, they are a problem for the entire economy. The good news is that some progress has already been made. Since 2015, the ratio of non-performing loans in the euro area has gone down from around 7.5% to around 5.5%. In absolute terms, this is a decrease of around 200 billion. However, that's just an average. There are parts of the banking sector where NPL stocks are still far too high. This issue needs to be resolved. That has been one of our supervisory priorities right from the start. Our comprehensive assessment back in 2014 helped us to gauge the size of the problem. In 2015, we set up a high-level working group whose job was to devise a joint supervisory approach, and the colleagues involved had done a great job. I thank them for that. They have developed an approach which is genuinely European. It aims to ensure a level playing field across the euro area. In March this year, we publish our qualitative guidance to banks on non-performing loans. It sets out the way in which banks are encouraged to deal with non-performing loans. It should help them to draw up plans which are ambitious yet realistic and which are backed by adequate governance structures. Using this guidance as a reference, our joint supervisory team have assessed the bank's plan. In short, we expect banks to deploy a diversified set of tools to reduce NPLs, such as cures, sales, and write-offs. We expect them to reduce their NPL steadily, year by year, and we expect the envisaged level of provisioning to be in line with the underlying strategy, for example, with regard to the sales at current market prices. Reducing the high stocks of NPL is the first step. Banks must also ensure that the problem does not recur, and this forward-looking approach is supported by our draft addendum to the guidance. The draft addendum clarifies our supervisory expectations in respect to the provisioning of loans that become non-performing in the future. So to be very clear, we are not talking about existing NPLs here. We are not talking about the stocks. The main purpose of the draft addendum is to make our approach transparent. And I would like to mention something which has sometimes been misunderstood. Our expectations are firm, but there are no automatic actions attached to them. We will discuss provisioning with each affected bank, and we will duly consider the clarification as well as the specific circumstances of each bank. If we are content with the clarification, then no further action will be proposed. However, if we are not convinced and believe that the bank's provisions do not adequately cover the credit risk, we may consider supervisory prudential measures under the Pillar 2 framework. The ECB plays an important role in resolving NPLs, and in doing so, we take an intrusive approach but also a fair one. This consultation demonstrates that we are interested in listening to all stakeholders before we take action. However, we are not the only ones that can and should take action. What we need is a joint effort which also involves the banks, regulators, and national governments, as well as European institutions. How easily NPLs can be resolved also depends on the national legal and judicial systems. And here, we see many differences between euro area countries. The time required to resolve NPLs in court, for instance, varies considerably. And in some countries, there are no specialized courts or judges to deal with unsolvencies. In addition, faster out-of-court state settlements are not available as a tool in every country. All these slows down the resolution of NPL, and it could all be addressed by national government. Given that we live in a banking union, we should aim for a system which makes it just as easy to resolve an NPL in one country of the euro area as in any other. Thank you for your attention. And now I will hand over to Sharon Donnelly, the Chair of the High Level Group on Non-Performing Exposures.
Thank you, Danielle, and good afternoon, everyone. So direct engagement with the public through the consultation process and through our public hearing today allows us to listen and benefit from your insights and helps to promote trust. We welcome the comments already provided from the European Parliament and the Commission and the feedback we have received from some other relevant stakeholders so far. Some, I believe, have viewed the draft addendum in isolation. However, I think it's important to recall that what we are consulting upon today is a non-binding draft addendum to the qualitative guidance that we published on 20th of March. It's worth recalling that the qualitative guidance I refer to requires banks to, amongst other things, establish bank-specific strategies which lay out their individual approach and objectives for NPL management. In this context, significant institutions need to take into account the bank-specific operating environment, bank-specific internal NPL capabilities, and embedding their own bank-specific strategy into management processes. Without an appropriate governance structure and operational setup, banks will not be able to address their NPL issues in an efficient and sustainable way. And this matters regardless of whether we are talking about the stocks of NPLs or new NPLs as they emerge. Banks have the responsibility to ensure that they have adequate internal control mechanisms to promote sound and efficient risk management. And this means dealing with their stocks of NPLs in a deliberate and determined manner. It also means ensuring that they are prepared for any buildup of NPLs in the future, the issue that we are here to discuss today. Now, the ECB, for its part in this context, as an intrusive supervisor, also has the responsibility to ensure banks have efficient provisioning methodologies and processes which should ensure that their NPL-related risks are adequately covered. And we have the responsibility to set clear expectations to that effect. So the addendum reinforces the qualitative guidance and, I think, is the context in which it should be seen. More specifically, the addendum sets out in a clear and transparent way our supervisory expectations for prudential provisioning of new NPLs. The draft addendum outlines that fully unsecured NPLs will generally be expected to be fully provisioned after two years of vintage. And full prudential provisioning should generally be expected after seven years for fully secured exposures. We have calibrated our expectations taking into account international best practice, the results of our stocktake on national practices with regard to legal, judicial, and extrajudicial elements, and supervisory judgment. This is part of normal supervision. It's also important to note that the draft addendum is not in itself a pillar 2 measure, but following supervisory dialogue and taking into account bank-specific circumstances, its implementation may result in individual pillar 2 measures for certain banks. The draft addendum provides an indication of what the ECB expects from banks when we conduct the assessment of the risks they are exposed to. The accounting position of a bank serves as a starting point for the supervisory dialogue in determining whether a bank has adequately covered, from a prudential perspective, its credit risk exposures. These and other CET1 adjustments are then compared with the supervisory expectations in the draft addendum. Banks are expected to discuss their approach to provisioning and collateral with respect to our supervisory expectations. The ECB will give due consideration to a bank's position compared with our expectations and in view of the specific circumstances of that bank. If through this process, the ECB still considers that the bank's provisions do not adequately cover credit risk, a supervisory measure under the Pillar 2 framework may be considered. However, if the ECB is satisfied with the explanations, no further action is proposed. At the risk of oversimplification, it can therefore be viewed as a three-stage process. First, as a transparent supervisor, we have set out in a clear and consistent fashion our supervisory expectations. Second, we will undertake our analysis of the bank-specific circumstances, strategies, governance and operations, recognition, the accounting position, and banks' comments in the supervisory dialogue, and so on, against these expectations. Third, these will be executed on a case-by-case basis, and our results will be incorporated in the bank-specific SREP decisions. Because working out NPLs requires concerted action by many stakeholders, it's important to note that we welcome work being done in other fora, including the Ecofin Action Plan. As previously mentioned, our work will not stop here, and we will bring forward further proposals to deal with the stocks of NPLs in Q1 2018. However, today is about the draft addendum which we have published, and we welcome your questions on this item. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you both. So we'll come to your questions and comments now. We have microphones here that we would direct to you when you raise your hands, and we would ask you, please, to state your name and affiliation. So please, in the front here.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Madame Donnelly and Madame Nui. Eric Lutier, Managing Director with KPMG. As you know, one of the questions that banks might have is about the operational complexity of these supervisory expectations. So will the expectations be targeting the specific exposure in terms of reporting or more the portfolio level? Thank you.
Well, let me start responding that the complexity is not that big because what the Ecofin measures are recommending is a pillar 1 measure that will take some time to be implemented. You could have mentioned IFRS 9 as well, that will be implemented in parallel, but it will take some time to be fully covering the portfolios. Obviously, if the Ecofin decides to go to pillar 1 legislative measures, once it is applicable and once it is addressing all the portfolios, we will adapt our own measures. So regarding our measures, they are the new non-performing exposures, which is indeed a difference with the Ecofin, which is targeting new loans. But we think that now is the moment to address non-performing exposures, in particular because we are enjoying good economic conditions in the euro area. And if we wait until there is a pillar 1 tax first, and then it is covering only new loans, we have to keep in mind that the full rolling over of the existing loan book can take a decade. So we have also to address, in my view, the future NPLs until we have measures that will be implemented and fully rolled over the whole portfolio. So there is a sequence, and we are ready to adapt our own guidance once there is something else. But still, there will stay room for pillar 2. We have, first of all, the accounting provisions. The powers of the supervisors start when the accounting provisions are not sufficient. With IFRS 9, they are less likely to be insufficient because they will be covering also expected losses. And if there is a pillar 1 tool one day, then we will have only a smaller remaining part to address, for sure.
Maybe I'll just add briefly. So regardless of the addendum, even leaving aside the addendum and its application to new NPLs, I think in general, we would expect banks, of course, to have policies, practices, procedures, and so on for dealing with their provisioning. And we would look at that through both a portfolio lens and a case-by-case individual bank file lens. For example, if we're doing onsite inspections, where we would look at samples of files. Certainly, I think in terms of our expectations, we're saying that banks need to look at individual loans and see where they are against these expectations. But of course, we accept that there has to be a kind of practical way to implement that, and this will be part of what we would discuss with a bank. I think that's particularly important where we'd be discussing, for example, if it wasn't going to apply, the reasons why particular loans or particular portfolios of loans, for example, didn't require this type of treatment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, why don't we start here in the third row, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Sein Gugelberger from LBBW. I'm wondering, in practical terms, what the... When the vintage actually kicks in, I... Once you have a loan considered defaulted, it usually takes three months, six months, nine months, maybe 12 months, until the whole process has been set up. Everything is being done so as to restructure a loan. Now, is that period of time already being considered, the relevant period of time by when you would have to provision such a loan? And once it has been restructured, is there any sort of cure period you have to be aware of until you can put it back into the good bank or the good book, so to speak? And the second question derived from the answer of the previous one. Did I understand that correctly, that kind of, given the IFRS 9 implementation being just in a couple of weeks, would you consider that to be a double whammy kind of for the banks in terms of stage 2 loans being considered in terms of LLPs or provisioning plus the intended provisioning under your addendum?
Well, a lot of good questions in this one. I will start with certain elements, and I will hand over to Sharon. First of all, you are describing first process, which is very much statutory auditor on accounting process. And there is separation between accounting and prudential. We are not authorized, the supervisors, to interfere with the work of the accountants, statutory auditors, and also with accounting rules, which can be quite different in Europe because certain banks are using IFRS, but certain banks as well are using their own national general accounting principles, meaning we can have 20 different accounting systems with their own vocabulary and their own operational steps. So keeping that as it is, we come after the accounting provisions. The supervisory perspective comes after. And indeed, you are right, the supervisory perspective now will have to take into account that the accounting rules, at least for the international accounting standards, has changed. We had IAS 39, now we have IFRS 9. So it means that when it is implemented, and it will take some time because the phasing in is pretty long, as it has been decided. So when it is decided, when we look at what we consider insufficient as provisions from a supervisory perspective, so totally different, it's likely, after IFRS, that it will be better covered by provisions, the credit risk, and we will interfere later. So that's the sequence. And for us, we use as a prudential a single definition of non-performing exposures. This is the definition that has been produced by EBA, and it was a significant step forward to have a single definition of non-performing exposures for the entire European market. This is what permits to do consistently the comprehensive assessment in 2014. So there are different ways of calling non-performing exposures, but what is the good way is to use the EBA definition.
Yep. So I start there, actually, with the EBA definition because I think it has been a very important piece of progress, and both the addendum and our earlier qualitative guidance all operates on the basis of the EBA definition, both of NPE and also of cure. So it's consistent with those definitions. I think the issue that you raise in terms of timing is actually quite important and goes maybe to some of the other questions and commentary that there has been about the addendum. So the first thing is, what is set out in the addendum in terms of timing is that the proposal is that it would apply to new non-performing exposures from the 1st of January 2018. So this is a distinction between what is non-performing now and what is going to be newly non-performing. So really, the scope is newly non-performing from the 1st of January. The question then is, well, how does that get implemented operationally? And exactly as you described, the bank has to go through a process of looking at that loan. Are they able to put a restructuring process in place? What is their own provisioning requirement for dealing with that loan? When would they apply that provisioning? How would they report that in their accounts and so on? And then, over time, if that continues to persist, that that remains a non-performing exposure and it doesn't cure, then what we're saying is our expectation is if that's unsecured, then in two years' time, we would be wondering why is that not 100% provisioned? And if it was secured in seven years' time from the time it turns non-performing, why is it not yet provisioned at 100%? And that would be what the dialogue is about. So when we talk about time, that's the timeline by which we're thinking about implementation. Now, of course, there's another question about when, after the public consultation, and I think Madame Nui has commented to this publicly already. We have to take in all of the comments, we have to consider all of the feedback, and then we have to finalize the guidance. So when it's actually published is another question about timing. But in terms of how it would work, that's the way it would work. And then in relation to cure, then provided the EBA definition of cure would be met, and we explained this in the guidance, then the vintage count or the count of the days of non-performing returns to zero, but it must be in the context of meeting the EBA definition of cure.
Okay, next question, the gentleman here in the fourth row, yes, in the middle.
Thank you. Gregory Turnbull-Schwarz, I'm Fixed Income Fund Manager at Bailey Gifford. I had two questions. One was just regarding the toolkit that the supervisor already has and whether it was felt that this aspect was missing or whether you could already have these conversations on a case-by-case basis in a non-binding manner, you know, with everything as it stands today, or whether it was felt that this was required in order to have that. And the second part would just be in terms of the publicity or otherwise, once you have identified an entity that's perhaps not living up to that standard, is it intended that there would be some sort of disclosure to the market of that or is it going to be kept on an off, you know, on a private basis? Thank you.
Thank you. I take the first one, and you take the second, Sharon?
Yep.
Well, the supervisors are not overstipping their mandate in this. We have the obligation to address vulnerabilities in the banking sector to guarantee the consistent application of regulation and supervisory policies. And that includes providing guidance that ensures fair and equal treatment of banks, and in particular, on an issue which is as important as delicate as non-performing exposures. And the Commission, in the recent report on the SSM, has explicitly encouraged us to take care of the necessary adjustment in case accounting provisioning is not sufficient from a supervisory perspective. And it's important because there were certain institutions or people or banks that considered that the language was not clear enough. So it has been very much clarified, and we consider that it is very good. So now, nobody can doubt that we have the possibility to take what is called the pillar 2 measures, specific, bank per bank, case by case measures. It is the supervisors prerogative to impose requirements on a case-by-case basis depending on the risk profile of the bank, and that is complementing requirements set by lawmakers. So even after the adoption by the legislators, for example, of a pillar 1 tool, and it's very good that they take this step of having also a pillar 1 tool. So the strong basis will be there when it is there, and we can complement bank per bank for the prudential part that will obviously be less important because part of it has already been done by IFRS 9 and by the legislator for pillar 1.
So I would just add on the kind of missing, the idea of whether it was missing or not. I'm first to just echo what I said in my opening remarks, that for us, I think this is about being transparent. And we do this for lots of other things. I mean, the ECB and many other supervisors publish often their expectations of all sorts of things. The ECB has other expectations around cyber risk, for example, and other risks. And in doing the addendum, that's, and in fact, our qualitative guidance earlier, I think we are trying to be transparent about what we expect to see. And that makes for a more informed supervisory dialogue because banks know already what to expect. And of course, the public and the markets know as well. So I think this is an important point.
If you allow me, Sharon, I will say that we have already published 17 such documents which produce expectations from the supervisors. But some of them were not so quantitative, so were... But some were quantitative, like the expectations regarding dividend policies. So it's not something new, it's just that because of the issue, it attracted more attention. Sorry for interrupting.
No, no problem. No, exactly. And then on the disclosure point, so clearly, as supervisor, we have lots of confidential information, and we would not be proposing that we would disclose this. But we had already in our qualitative guidance some expectations set out there about further disclosures that banks should make. And one of the disclosures that's listed there is that banks should disclose vintages and provisions by vintages and so on. And this is also referred to in the addendum, but the disclosure would happen in this way.
So the gentleman right here in the next row, after, behind, yes.
Thank you. I'm Federico Cornelli from the Italian Banking Association. We recognize the need to reduce NPS in all Europe, and we welcome the introduction of your guidelines on NPLs management on March 27, 2017. And it is important for us, the creation of a quasi-liquid private market for NPL, which we would like to maintain stable as much as possible. I have four questions, if I may. The first one regards the impact analysis. The Better Regulation Principles foresees the impact analysis should be at the base of any proposal for new ruling and providing estimated impact on the proposed regulation per se over the specific industry and more generally over the economic cycle. And to this extent, we wonder how the two years and the seven years' timing have been computed. We understand that it was based on an international benchmark. Also, we wondered if you have any estimation of the consequences of such ruling on credit... Also, we wondered if you have any estimation of the consequences of such ruling on credit pricing, credit supply, GDP growth, et cetera? And in our view, if you have any estimates on the impact on LGD calculation, this would be precious for us. And the second question is, again, the coordination between IFRS and tax and your prudential regulation. This proposed prudential regulation does not match with IFRS. In Italy, all banks use full IFRS and tax rules. Banks could easily find themselves in a situation in which IFRS and NPL addendum rules produce different computation, thus creating problems for financial communication and potential impact on price-sensitive information, both for listed and non-listed banks. In particular, we have in mind the Prospectus Directive, the MAR regulation, and again, we wonder how this ruling could impact on minimum capital requirements, on the breach of minimum distributable dividends, and on the new MRL requirements. And as far as taxation is concerned, IFRS provisioning and prudential calendar provisioning do have different treatments, thus creating a tax distortion. Is there any chance to avoid any problem? Just to find the solution, we are trying to find a solution to this. The third question is that, as Madame Nui said, there are different experiences in civil courts length in Europe, but it seems to us that the NPL addendum does not take into account the different traditions of judicial systems, and especially different lengths of civil courts, those imposing a one-size-fits-all. We are extremely in favor of a rapid convergence path in civil courts and bankruptcy codes. Every day, we ask for a European set of common codes. But until we reach such convergence, we should prudently take into account that there still exist differences. And the fourth question is, we hope that this new NPL addendum will apply to new loans originated from the date of in the future, also taking into account the value of the guarantees connected to NPS. It is our opinion that the European Commission proposal could be a starting point for discussion, even to allow us to correctly price new loans. Thanks for your attention.
Great. Thank you for the questions. Hopefully, I can pick up all the points. So maybe I go in reverse order first. So in terms of the new loans, and I think you mentioned guarantees, we do have a way of considering guarantees, and I think Madame Nui has already commented about the Commission proposal and so on, and how both Pillar One and Pillar Two measures may be needed, and also the fact that if the Commission introduced their proposal, it would clearly take some time and so on, and this is obviously required, or potentially required now. In relation to your questions about the impact analysis and the court systems, I might take the two of those together, because they do kind of interact a little bit. So when we were considering the calibration of the two and the seven, we looked at a number of different things. So we looked at similar requirements, like supervisory expectations in other jurisdictions, including outside of Europe. We did look at exactly the point you make about the length of time it takes in judicial systems for collateral to be executed and so on, and this part of our work was very much informed by our stocktake of legal and judicial practices, which, again, we have already published in the interest of transparency, it was published earlier this year. So I certainly think we would share some of the concerns you mentioned there about these differences, and how the length of time particularly to execute collateral can vary across banking union, and we have raised that publicly before. But we took that into consideration when we were calibrating the seven years, particularly that in some countries, it can take quite a length of time to get collateral. And I think that we felt that seven years was a reasonable balance, taking into account all the different factors of how long it might take to go through court, but also to say that if after seven years, you haven't managed to restructure a loan, you haven't written it off under your existing policies, and you haven't managed to execute the collateral, it's reasonable to ask the question, well, why is this not fully provisioned? So that was part of the analysis there. In relation to the more macro effects, I'm sure Danielle would want to comment on that, but I think we see that growth has improved in the eurozone consistently over recent years, and I think we have a strong view that NPLs can cause tremendous problems in terms of the ability of banks to lend and finance the economy, and so we have to take the opportunity of these times of growth to deal with the issue, and we can't allow it to persist. So I think from a macroeconomic point of view, this informed our assessment of how it would work. In relation to your comments around tax and disclosure and interaction with the prospectus and so on, I certainly think this is a useful thing to have been raised in the consultation, and if you have specific suggestions and so on about how those kinds of things can interact, we would certainly look at those to make sure that they're clarified in the addendum.
Thank you very much, Sharon. I will try to pick up the remaining points, and if I miss one, feel free to ask me the question afterwards. You mentioned complexity compared with IFRS 9. Well, first of all, what has not changed is there is a block which is the work of the accountants, statutory auditors, about accounting rules and what is prudential, and it has always been different, the two blocks. On top of that, there is a long and complex, I recognize, phasing in of IFRS 9, which has been decided. The ECB was in favor of having the initial shock to be phased in, but not only this is phasing, but the additional provisions are phasing in, even where they caused by business decisions that have been made when IFRS 9 was already applicable. So it will take a lot of time before the effects, full effects of IFRS 9, the solvency of the banks, for example, will be taken into account. So the risk of complexity is almost non-existent, but in any case, it is not materializing, even if little before quite some time. Regarding the credit delivered in Italy, for example, because you mentioned, you are from this country, and mentioned the point, I checked this morning before coming to this discussion on the hearing, and the results from ECB statistics regarding Italy, third quarter of 2017, are quite clear. They show an increase of credits for both households and firms, on a parallel move towards more accommodative lending standards by banks and households on firms, towards household and firms. So no such risk right now, precisely because the period is the right one to do this. And before the recovery in economic situation, I was told by the Italian banks that I should wait until the growth was back, and precisely, growth has been back for some time now, and it's good to take the benefit of this good period of time. You mentioned differences in taxes. Oh, yes, that's absolutely correct, but it has always existed, and this is not something that can stop supervisory work. We have no power, no say in taxes, and that's very correct, in my view, should not be the case. And we are looking at risk, and we appreciate risk, and what has to be done to cover risk. You mentioned also the fact that judicial systems are different, and some are more efficient than others. That's a pity, because in the banking union, that should not be the case, it should move. And in fact, Sharon and her team have spent a lot of time to produce different, 19 stocktake of the situation of the different countries, best practices, judicial systems, and so on and so forth, precisely to make sure that the situation would improve. And what national government should do, they should take measure to improve the efficiency of judicial systems, and some are doing, many are doing, and this is work in progress also in Italy, to the best of my knowledge. They should increase access to collateral, and they should create faster out-of-court solutions. Regarding the creation of a liquid market of distressed debt, yet that should happen, should the magnitude of the problem is such that we need all tools that we can get to be able to adopt all kinds of solutions for these non-performing exposures, and all initiatives are welcome, obviously. Improve data quality and access, that's very important, because the prices of the non-performing exposures, if they are sold in liquid markets or European platform or whatever, depends very much to the quality of the data that can be provided, and precisely, the level of certainty of the recovery of the collateral. If there is uncertainty because of the judicial system that is preventing the prices to go up. And obviously, they should remove tax on legal impediments to debt restructuring that exists in certain countries, but that we cannot do. Non-performing exposures is a problem that goes beyond supervision, and we need the help of all stakeholders.
Any further questions? So the lady here in the front, please.
Chacoli Mills from the Association for Financial Markets in Europe. I have three questions. I'll try and make them quick. I think two are perhaps a little bit more fundamental, philosophical, and one is a technical question. The first question is about the nature of the supervisory dialogue, and I think that our members welcome the fact that you have given clarity on your expectations here. That's, you know, it's quite clear, you say it's nothing new, but it is a quantitative clarification, and that is helpful. It's also very helpful that you've clarified that there is no automatic consequence, and that there will be a supervisory dialogue, and perhaps it would be useful to make sure that that is reflected in the final, in the wording of the final guidance. I wonder if you can, so this is my question, I wonder if you can say anything, perhaps as to the supervisory dialogue and its process? I think that there might be a way to address at least the perceived burden of industry here, and ensure that there is no confusion between accounting and prudential approaches. So we understand that it's not your intention for there to be any, but to ensure that there really is a clear separation. Is there a reason why you would not, instead of using your expectation as the starting point, and then asking a bank to explain and justify why it might deviate, is there a reason why you would not look at the accounting provisions and ask for justifications when you think they are necessary, because the situation does not meet your expectations? So it's kind of difficult for me to explain, but I'm talking about trying to change a little bit the onus and the burden of proof, if you like, that's not the right word, but to put the onus on the supervisor, on the ECB, to challenge when the expectation is not met, so that the expectation really is a kind of backstop rather than a starting point to avoid the kind of confusion. So that's one question. If you could talk us a little bit through the supervisory dialogue steps and why the reversal might be possible or not. The second question is the elephant in the room. You mentioned in your introductory remarks that this was not the point of the discussion today, but definitely, there is a lot of interest in understanding whether there will be similar measures or not in relation to the stock. As soon as information can be made available on the approach that would be adopted there, I think that would be very helpful, and it would help communication and dialogue between supervisors, the industry, and also all of the other stakeholders who are involved in addressing this issue. And then, my third question, which is the technical one, is are you able to provide a little bit more clarity on the definition of exposure when it comes to, for example, off-balance-sheet exposures and how those might be dealt with? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will take the supervisory part and let the more technical and also the possibility to add to the supervisory part if I forget something, because Sharon is and has a very strong background of supervision as well. In fact, why to start with expectations? And I will use a concept that Sharon has already put on the table and that I had not, transparency. When undertaking a job of supervisors, we supervise 125 banking groups comprised of 1,200 banks in 19 countries. We need to have a methodology to benchmark so many different banks. So we need to have expectations, we need to have a discussion between supervisors and a decision at the supervisory board on what are the expectations. So that's why it is the starting point. I would like to give examples on a couple of other issues that you have addressed. You say, why not start with the accounting provision and have the prudential on top? In fact, this is the way it works, and I will give you the example of the 2014 comprehensive assessment. We had an asset quality review, which was a part that precisely produced misvaluation of assets, lack of provision sometimes of assets, and then there was a stress test conducted on the basis of the corrected valuation. In fact, what happened after the exercise, we had meetings with the statutory auditors of all the banks, we said, that were in the comprehensive assessment, we said to these statutory auditors, this is what we consider as supervisor, missing provisions. What are you taking into account in the accounting provisions? If you take 50% of that, we will take 50% on prudential side. If you take everything, we will take nothing on prudential side. So there might be differences depending on the accounting rules, which are quite diverse, as I already mentioned. So if the work is done by the accountants' accounting rules, it's okay, but when it's not done, then we have to address the missing provision on the prudential side. So this is the way it works still now. We look at what has been done by the auditors and accountants, and we compare that with our expectations, and then, bank per bank, because this is what it is, prudential supervision on Pillar Two, it's bank per bank, case by case. Regarding what is the supervisory dialogue exactly? I will give you an example of supervisory dialogue by addressing the stock precisely, the legacy assets. We had the qualitative guideline that was defined by Sharon's group, and we were working on the expectation for the steady state, but during this period of time, in parallel to the consultation on the qualitative guidance, and in parallel to the work on the steady state, we had this kind of supervisory dialogue with the banks that are burdened by non-performing exposures. It means that following the completion and publication of the qualitative guidance last March, we meet with the significant banks that were burdened by this issue, and ask them their own non-performing exposure plans. And over the period between March to June, the banks submitted their plans, their strategy to address the non-performing exposures, and the joint supervisory team, the GSTs, met bilaterally with each of these banks on the issue. And we are now in a process, after one meeting or two or three meetings between the GST and the bank, so you see, it's really case by case, we are in the process to send letters. GSTs will send letters to the banks assessing their strategy, based on are they ambitious enough, related obviously to the quantity, the magnitude of the effort, how realistic they are on governance. So ambition, again, is easy, gross reduction, volume the bank is targeting, how realistic it is, well, it depends, is it feasible? And it depends on the measures that will be used to reduce non-performing exposures. What are the tools? Cures, cash recoveries, write-offs, sales, how diversified those measures are? And obviously, if you want to sell, do you have enough provisions not to take losses? Or do you have enough capital to take? Or do you have enough capital to take some losses on top of the provision? So this is what is realistic. Then we look at governance. If it is a big project for the bank, if it is ambitious, if it is an important issue for the bank, obviously, we expect the banks to have performance incentives, possible bonus, for example, for their staff that are based on the reduction of the NPLs. So are there really good incentives? And also the quality of the plan. A plan that is pretty general and vague and that will lend in two or three years and no milestones, nothing measurable at each milestone is not exactly a good plan. So you see, the supervisory dialogue is pretty intense. And this is what we have done on the stock, this one. And we will do the same on the basis of the expectations for the future non-performing loans. And this is already providing quite, quite good results. So that's why also we are working on something for the stock. I don't know at all what this something will be because this is work in progress and I have not seen anything. But obviously, the idea is to have, we have three categories, three categories of banks. There are banks that decide, okay, the supervisors are very serious about that. It's the moment to do a serious turnaround of the bank and to have a kind of one-off cleaning capital issuance. We have another category which take it seriously, are a bit slower, but that will produce fruit as well. And there are still banks nevertheless that are in denial or send a vague plan, lending in two or three years, but without explaining how it will be delivered and that do not have the capacity of this ambition because not enough provisions or so on and so forth. So we certainly want to push forward in this solution for the stock, the ones that are still in denial. And we don't want to create problems to the ones that are doing the right thing at a good speed.
Thanks, Danielle. Maybe I just add a few points. So first of all, you talked about language and the redrafting and so on. So I would say again, in being transparent about our expectations, it's very important that people understand what they are. And if there have been misunderstandings, then obviously we have to address that. So that is exactly why we've had the consultation process and that is exactly why we'll have the hearing. Maybe to give you an example of that, we have been clear in the addendum, if you have it there with you, that this is non-binding. We also have a kind of diagram or figure table in the addendum which says that there will be no supervisory measures if the dialogue delivers that the deviations are acceptable. And there will be if the dialogue delivers that the deviations are not acceptable. So for me, it's clear that it's not automatic. Having said that, I think words like comply and explain and so on have been interpreted as being automatic. So I hope we've been clear today that that is not the case and we will certainly take that into account in the drafting. A further point on the dialogue, which I think Madame Nuri has explained really, really well, including the examples she's given. I think it's sometimes thought that the dialogue begins one day and it ends another day and that's it. In fact, it's constant. It is going on all the time. So you talk about the burden of proof. I talk about challenging back a bank. The bank says something, I question that and vice versa. So it is genuinely an iterative process that continues a lot. And I think the strategies for NPLs is a really, really good example of that. Clearly, we started with the comprehensive assessment. We didn't kind of not do anything else on NPLs in the meantime until we published the qualitative guidance. This was ongoing dialogue all the time and the work on the strategies is definitely very focused on that. The last thing I would say about the stock is clearly there is work is ongoing and again, we have been transparent about that. I think, though, we have always tried to take into account the current situation. So we have gone step by step through the comprehensive assessment, through the qualitative guidance, through this addendum and quantitative guidance. We take into account what's going on in the wider economic environment. We take into account the situations of the individual banks. We take into account the progress that's being made or the progress that's not being made. And all of these different aspects will inform whatever that further proposal is that we will make in the springtime. On the off-balance-sheet exposures, I think Anne was going to say a word or two and then maybe Danielle wants to go back.
Okay, so off-balance-sheet exposures are generally included because we use the EBA definition of NPE. And if you look into that definition, it does include off-balance-sheet. Now, 95% of NPEs are actually on balance sheet if you look into our latest supervisory statistics. So the off-balance-sheet item on average is not a big deal. However, the coverage is relatively low. Again, in our statistics, you see, it's only 14%. So it can indeed be a relevant item for a couple of banks. If you have ideas or certain things that you think we need to clarify in the addendum, please let us know. Otherwise, I would see it as part of the supervisory dialogue to address these very specific topics.
No further? Okay, then we continue the gentleman on the far right there, please.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Ingmar Wulffert from the Association of German Banks. I have one question concerning the scope of the addendum. To my understanding, you mentioned in your guideline published in March that this guideline or several parts are primarily addressed to high NPL banks. So we would suggest that the addendum is also addressed primarily to high NPL banks because we think with this addendum, low NPL banks, they also have to implement the processes, et cetera. And these banks would maybe be punished, inverted commas, by implementing this addendum. So that would be our proposal to make it clear.
Maybe we were not clear enough, but obviously, our expectations are covering all banks that we supervise. We want to implement a level playing field and consistency. Obviously, it is of interest for the banks that are above a certain threshold, above the average, for example, of the ECB, but SSM, ECB SSM banks. But precisely, certain countries are not necessarily very well-equipped in their legal framework because NPLs have not been an issue for them recently and is not now. But this is the moment to change the judicial system for the moment where they might be concerned and burdened by NPLs. It may happen. No country can consider that it cannot happen to them. And we have also another concept that was defined in our work regarding non-performing exposures. There are banks that are overburdened by the global, their percentage of non-performing exposures compared to the other loans and assets. But we use the concept of pockets of non-performing exposures. There can be, there can be banks that have a small ratio of non-performing exposures but still have, can be shipping, can be real estate, can have one problem that they have to fix. It's a less big problem because it's a pocket of non-performing exposures in portfolios of credit risk that are of good quality for the rest. But still, it doesn't mean that they should not address it. So obviously, the supervisory dialogue is very intense with the banks that are currently burdened. But we want the other banks to be properly equipped. We don't want to have a long phasing in for new bank that would enter into non-performing exposures. Everybody has to be ready.
Any other questions? So let's take the gentleman and the lady there and then we will move over here.
Jörg Schaber, Deutsche Bank, and thanks for taking my two questions. Actually, one would be follow-up questions regarding the supervisory dialogue being. Can you a little bit elaborate on how you ensure within the supervisory dialogue the consistency in the explain process? I.e., if in one discussion turns out a certain portfolio or a certain approach will be accepted as explained, how this is ensured as in another firm, the same assessment will be done? And the second question is also a technical one, and maybe I've over-read it somewhere. But in order to also encourage the sales of non-performing loans amongst other banks, how are purchased credit impaired assets being treated under this rule? So those are defaulted according to the definitions, those have to be considered? Is that something which we then have to take up in the explain process? Or is that something which can be per se excluded? Are there any ideas which you already have? Thanks.
Thank you. I will start with the supervisory dialogue. How we obtain the consistency? First of all, precisely by having expectations known and they are known publicly for this. So it's transparency helps. Also, because the outcome of this supervisory dialogue is an input into what we call the SREP process, supervisory on review process that on an annual basis delivers the pillar two capital on other measures, other requirements and guidance. And also by the fact that those decisions, the final outcome of this supervisory dialogue comes for decisions to the supervisory board of the SSM. And our members are quite cautiously and prudent and attached to the consistency precisely. It's not unusual when we have a new development, a new point which is addressed or something that has been addressed, but not so often for everybody to remember that I am asked by my colleagues, prove me that you, and I want maybe this minute in the summary of this meeting, prove me that you are ready to take the same measure when there is a bank that will be in the same situation. Obviously, it has to be the same situation because pillar two on supervisory action is bank per bank. Or prove me that you have already taken this measure for a similar bank before in the same situation. So this is something which is taken very, very seriously by members and also, of course, by us because this is what we want to do, to be fair in banking supervision. And to be fair, you have to treat banks with consistency and fairness. And it's important because if you are not fair, you cannot be tough. And we need to be tough because there is no room for complacency. We are coming from a very serious crisis. We have been built after a very serious crisis to make sure that we are better equipped when there will be another crisis. So consistency, level playing field is taken very, very seriously. Explanation, well, this takes place in the dialogue between the banks and their GSTs. This is the way it starts. The visits of the banks voluntarily to Frankfurt or maybe the GST is asking the banks to come with a certain periodicity on certain agendas. In general, it's both voluntarily plus the programme of supervisory action for the year. And what I always tell to the banks that I meet, in particular when I go visiting the 19 countries of the SSM, is that if you are not fully satisfied by the explanations you have received from your GST, escalate the questions to the DG, pay a visit to the DG in charge of this GST. And if you are still not comfortable with the response or fully convinced by the response that I've not fully understood the response, you can come and see me. I will, I have never refused a meeting with a bank. And in general, I would say the banks understand what I have in mind and what I am expecting them to do. Sometimes they will not like it, but they will get a clear response.
So I would just add to that that I suppose internally, within the JSTs and the support structures that we have to support the JSTs in doing their work, kind of behind the published guidance and the expectations, is a lot of material about benchmarking comparisons across portfolios, across banks, across countries. There is, you know, processes where JSTs can get support from each other and other colleagues internally to compare and understand explanations and to make sure that this kind of consistency and fairness is put in place. And that goes on as part of normal supervision, again, complementing the supervisory dialogue. In terms of sales, Anne might say a further word in a moment. But I mean, the intention is that there isn't some way for you to kind of arbitrage the system by selling a portfolio from one bank to another. And if a new bank buys a portfolio of assets, then of course, the same expectations would apply. But in the same way, I think you even mentioned that this would also be part of the dialogue, but maybe you want to add something.
Yeah, generally, fully, fully in line with your comment. And I guess if you have the financial means and operational capabilities to buy NPL portfolios, you will have done a sound due diligence and this is a very sound evidence for the supervisory dialogue. And if you can prove that the cash flows you had expected in the due diligence process are coming through, I think you really have a strong, a strong case for an exception.
Okay, the lady next to the gentleman who just asked a question had a question or comment.
My name is Sandra Hock, also Deutsche Bank, and I have two questions. The overall idea of the NPL guideline, I understood that you want to manage non-performing loans better. But if banks need to provision their exposures, non-performing exposures by 100% in a very short period of time, two years, even though clients might still recover, don't you see a risk for the real economy that banks might be more reluctant to lend in the first place to less profitable clients, to sub-investment grade clients? And then also when clients have become, loans turned non-performing, the question is, what would happen to those loans? We assume that there will be higher rate of non-performing loan trading. So if a bank, for example, has as a commercial lending team loans in their books, then do they then need to sell those loans to their trading desk to prove that there is still a value in it? Because then the market has proven that there is value in that loan and then they don't need to provision. And then we only have all those loans with the trading entities and not the commercial banks anymore who are supposed to support the economy, private households and corporates.
Well, I don't think it goes, it's needed to go that far. We have a wonderful situation being the supervisors of 19 countries to have a good knowledge on a good benchmark of the situation and good appreciations. And I am sure my colleagues will demonstrate because their database is incredible, incredibly comprehensive and precise. So no need to go to the market to have a price that could be negotiated with another counterparty. As a matter of fact, that would not be enough to have such a limited number of transactions. We have better, better information. Your question seems to suggest as well that to take care of non-performing exposures is eating financial stability at the end of the day because less loads and less growth maybe. We, what is, we cannot ignore risk. If risks are not addressed, they are not disappearing, they are just getting bigger. So we need to address risk. We need to address risk early enough when the piling up of non-performing exposures is taking place. That will learn probably, that will demonstrate to the banks that maybe there is something wrong with their underwriting credit criteria if they are starting to pile up necessary provisions for non-performing exposures. And it's better that they know it sooner than later to be able to correct the trajectory. And as the president, I said, I will remind you that banks that are burdened because precisely they do not address the non-performing. because precisely they do not address the non-performing exposures at the beginning, burdened with non-performing exposure stocks are the ones that constantly and consistently lend less to the economy. So I guess there is no other solution than to have a good knowledge of the situation. Thanks to the supervisory dialogue and the need to make the provisions when the new non-performing exposures are starting, to take the needed measures to correct this trend and address the problem of the stock when there is a stock fast enough to be able to do their job and really lend to the economy, not spending their human resources to get solutions for non-performing exposures instead of on changing their business model when it is needed or finalizing, fine tuning their business model rather than put all their energy to address a big stock. But you have, no, can mention what you have in your databases maybe to to avoid the need to practically get a price.
So we have obviously regulatory reporting, but we also have implemented a series of enhanced reporting for banks with higher levels of NPLs. We also engage quite regularly with banks on management data. We engage with accountants also and statutory auditors. On the level of transactions, we would monitor this on a quarterly basis. So if we were to see movements that maybe warranted us to focus on with a higher level of risk and higher level of attention, this would absolutely be in our remit. This would be something the JSTs would deal with on a quarterly basis, really assessing the data, the level of granularity, mismatches, etc. So this is definitely within our focus and something again that we will continue to monitor when the guidance is implemented so that we can ensure no arbitrage, for example, or unintended consequences, etc. So absolutely in our radar.
Thank you, I think there were some questions over here on the side of the room, yeah. So the gentleman here, or you start with, and then can you, yes, please hand over then the microphone to the gentleman. Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much, Francesca Brunari from Confindustria. Confindustria is the Italian association representing one hundred fifty thousand manufacturing and service companies employing around five point four million people. So just a few comments on business side. Businesses are concerned about the impact of the addendum on credit supply to enterprises and particularly to SMEs, which still rely heavily on bank lending. In this context, we are still particularly worried about the impact of the addendum on unsecured loans, which of course are very important to us. Of course, we acknowledge the importance to keep reducing NPL ratio and the stock of NPL, this is particularly important for Italian enterprises. But we believe that this has to be done gradually. We share these concerns with Business Europe, which is the European Association, representing association of industrial companies from all over Europe. Business Europe sent a letter to Madame Newey early this week answering the consultation. Together with Business Europe, we fear that the release of the addendum at the beginning of the recovery phase, which is very important to us, could represent a restrictive measure penalizing economic growth across Europe. We do not agree with the argument that the addendum would impact only on specific countries or specific banks. On the contrary, we believe that due to an unavoidable contagion effect in the EU, measures like the addendum could penalize the European banking sector as a whole and the European economy as a whole, increasing systemic risk and not reducing systemic risk. This is why we believe that before finalizing new rules, it is essential to carry out an impact assessment of these rules on enterprises in order to ensure that they encourage growth and prevent damage to businesses in the wider economy. So thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, because you represent the corporates, I would like to make a remark on the, for the corporates as well and then hand over to my colleagues. In fact, when non-performing exposures are addressed early enough, it's much more likely that they will be able, those exposures, those loans, to be cured, to be restructured and transform into a performing loan. And that's important for the corporates because if this is not happening, what is a non-performing loan in the balance sheet of the bank is something that is also in the balance sheet of the corporates. And until this is fixed with the other lender, where or another, the good banks, the banks that are not burdened by non-performing exposures and that are making more loans than the others, they will not make loans to corporate which has longer number of elements in the balance sheet that are just disputes with the banks, loans that are not performing, while borrowing for the corporates that are not performing. So we should not think only about sales or write-off or also the write-offs would help the corporates. But when it's done early enough, really, the way of addressing it is much more easy and much less painful, cure, restructure the loan, make it performing by having longer maturity, maybe by structuring it differently. And it's not a benefit for the corporates to have these non-performing loans not addressed. It's even a double punishment in fact for the growth on the economy of the country.
I would only compliment that, I think the point about addressing earlier being better is absolutely the case. Unfortunately, many countries and many of our supervisors have had bad experiences over the last few years with non-performing loans and the negative effect that they can have. Our qualitative guidance for the stock, when we prepared that, a lot of the work there was looking at best practices in banks and in other supervisors prior to the introduction of banking union. And certainly one of the key issues there was that addressing problems earlier and putting in place proper restructures. So not what we used to call extend and pretend, but proper restructures that are actually effective is better and so I would just add that to what has already been said. I think the other aspect is, of course, in introducing something for new loans, we have to think about how that will interact with credit. But I think it's our responsibility to make sure that non-performing loans do not emerge as another problem into the future. And that is a key motivation in this case is to protect banks and economies and households and firms from a buildup in the future because we can see now the scale of the problem that we have with the pile of non-performing loans that we still have from the previous crisis.
So the gentleman who has the microphone, please.
Yes, thank you very much, I am Inas Bikkula from Italian Federation of Corporate Banks. I have three questions to put on the table. The first one, don't you think that an extent and general obligation for provisioning set at hundred percent denies the risk-taking and risk-management core nature of the banking business? This is the first question. The second one, I would like to come back to the macroeconomic effect. There is no doubt that a growing economy as we have at the moment is a good environment for balance sheet cleaning and to reduce significantly the stock of NPLs. However, what will happen during a downturn cycle? How to overcome the likely procyclical effect in an economic recession? Did ECB carry out an impact assessment? If so, what are the results? The third question, what do you think about implicit incentives given to market participants for non-performing loans? In my opinion, those incentives are not the right one because as non-performing loans buyers know that banks are obliged to sell their non-performing loans portfolio within a binding deadline, buyers know that they have the upper hand on price setting. Thank you.
Well, I will start and in particular with your last question. Incentives, I don't know, but I think an important incentive that is for banks that doing too little too late can take them to fail or can take the SSM to take a decision of failing or likely to fail. This has happened recently to a few banks. That's triggered by investors that are losing trust in the banks and stop funding them at a certain moment because they consider too little too late is done. So it's a very serious issue that banks have to take seriously. That's the first point. Regarding the, well, I've not noted very well your first question, so I will hand over immediately and I will come back if something, there was something I wanted to say.
I also start with this question about incentives. First to say, there is no obligation arising from either the original guidance or for the addendum for banks to sell portfolios of non-performing loans. I think we have been consistently clear in relation to this in all the communications we have made about both the original guidance and this addendum. Clearly, sales of non-performing loans is a tool that banks can use as part of their suite of measures. But we have not imposed any requirements on banks to do that and as part of the strategies and the dialogue that continues with the banks, of course, some banks may decide to do that, but we haven't set any expectations in that regard. So I think you said, I think obliged and it's important to clarify that because we haven't put an obligation like that in place. In terms of your broader questions again about the economy and so on and the backdrop of a growing economy being a good opportunity to clean balance sheets and a concern about procyclical, I think of course we have to take all of these things into account. But I think our view is if you don't deal with these issues in a time of growth, then what happens if there is a downturn in the future and there is still a significant problem or a growing problem at that time? And so for us, it's a balance of what is the right and prudent measure to do, particularly in this case where we're talking about new loans to prevent a buildup of non-performing loans into the future. And then if I understood your first question well about the hundred percent effectively putting a kind of obligation on the bank that denies its ability to do what it's there to do, which is to take risk and make loans. I think, and I certainly hope we've been very clear today, that this is not a kind of a binding approach. We are setting it out in a clear way that this is what we expect. I think it's reasonable as a supervisor to say if this hasn't been dealt with after two years or seven years, what is going on here? Why has this not been dealt with? Why has it not been provisioned? And we are setting that out as a starting point in terms of our expectations for the dialogue to take place. I think it doesn't mean that there's a general obligation on a bank to do something. That means it can't take on loans and do its work in terms of managing risk and so on.
Yes, I have found the two points that I wanted to add. It was mentioned several times that we have not reacted, why not impact assessment? Well, we are talking about new non-performing exposures. So it's a bit complicated to have an assessment of something that does not exist. We can use different elements to try to guess what the situation will be. But we can do easily an impact assessment for everything related to the stock, but it's pretty difficult. And we believe that due to this new framework that ensures that credit risk is taken more seriously, credit underwriting criteria will be reviewed and improved in the bank. There will, there should be less new non-performing exposures after the guidance and after all the work on the supervisory dialogue which is taking place right now for the banks that have to address their problem. Regarding also the automatic element, there was directly or indirectly a relation to the fact that we disregard the value of the collateral, for example, for the secured loans. We don't question at all the value of the collateral, but we question the timely executability of the collateral, the recoverability of the collateral. Because if it cannot be reprocessed and used and executed in such a fashion that it is covering the non-performing exposure, what is the benefit of having such collateral? And after such a period of time, the probability that something will be recovered from the collateral is much, much lower. So, well, yes, collateral is a credit risk mitigant, but once a loan becomes non-performing, seven years to take care of the executability of the collateral is something already quite, I would say maybe not generous, but reasonable at least.
Thank you, another question or comment from the frontier, please.
Thank you very much, Jacqueline Mills from the Association for Financial Markets in Europe again. I think two quick observations and then a question if I may. It seems that in the debate on NPLs and how to deal with them, one aspect that perhaps requires further attention, research, consideration is precisely the role that collateral does play. I think it's not always about its execution. It doesn't necessarily have to be executed or realized to help restructuring and successful outcomes. And I think that that also might be at the root of some some of the industry's nervousness about some of these proposals. A second comment, you know, as an association representing financial markets, I think what we would like to say in terms of the development of secondary markets for NPLs, of course, that is very important as being one of the solutions that has been mentioned. I think and we would encourage the ECB, but also all of the other institutions who are involved in these discussions, to ensure that there are no distortions that are created as an unintended side effect in the market. So making sure that there is an appropriate balance between the supply and the demand sign is very important. And I'm not quite sure, but I hope that Sharon Finn's team would be looking at possible unintended consequences or possible distortions that could arise in that context. My question relates again a little bit to secondary markets and NPL purchases and trading. I was a little bit concerned about the response to an earlier question on how to deal with the purchases of NPLs and whether the calendar provisioning expectation would apply in that case. It occurs to me that perhaps a purchase of NPLs shouldn't perhaps not be considered as falling under the new NPL or new NPE category. I think it might be interesting to explore that. Because while you do explain that there could be a case here to deviate from the supervisory expectation depending on the dialogue that you would have with your supervisor, it seems to me that that could be a relatively burdensome process for some banks to have to go through to achieve that explanation and acceptance from their JST. Whereas other market participants who are not subject to these provisioning rules would not have that burden. And I wonder if there might not be again a little bit of, again, perhaps an unintended distortion in the secondary markets here. Thank you.
Well, this question was responded by my right side, so I will let them. Two remarks on your two first points that are kind of follow-up to what I said before. The role of collateral and what we expect from collateral, well, that could be improved in fact and will make the recoverability of collateral more easy. When we look at what the banks sometimes call secured loans, they in good faith believe that they have secured loans. But sometimes they have in fact promised to give collateral that was given when the loan was allocated, was granted. But the maintenance of this situation, the legal documentation that could have been taken at a certain moment was absolutely, was not perfect. And while what is supposed to be secured all of a second is not secured in fact, because the legal documentation is not properly because the legal documentation is not properly done or maintained. And on top of that, when it's possible, when the legal documentation is correct, indeed, there are still too many uncertainties regarding the capacity of the judicial systems to permit this repossession. Also, regarding the secondary markets for NPLs, you said something around the balance between supply and demand that has to be taken into account. Well, we have 800 billion of non-performing exposures in the SSM bank. It's not a market for the buyer, for the sellers. It will always be a market for the buyer until we are much, 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 much lower in the amounts. So in these circumstances, I would say better be among the first to use the markets because after a certain moment, well, maybe there will be no buyer anymore. We don't know, but it cannot be a balance when you have so much to sell, really.
Maybe just on the burdensome process. So first of all, I mean, we're here to hear the feedback, so thank you for that, and we will certainly take it into account. Maybe just one observation. Even if you leave aside the addendum, okay, if you're a bank and you're buying a portfolio of non-performing loans, I think it's fair to say your supervisor is going to want to know a lot about that anyway, in terms of understanding why you're doing that, how you're going to manage that, what the recovery is going to be like on that and so on. So I think the point we were making was, as part of the due diligence process a bank would be doing anyway to buy a portfolio of non-performing loans, there would be a discussion with the supervisor to understand. And then part of that now with the addendum would also be to take that into account. But I think you can expect that there would be some discussions and information to be provided anyway, but nonetheless, we will take away your comments. I don't know if you want to add something, Sharon?
Yeah, so absolutely, because as part of the process to buy them, there is almost a rightsizing of the value also. So we'd have to take that into consideration. So the value is coming down, coming off the balance sheet of the bank that's selling is going on to the balance sheet of the bank that's buying, but as part of that transaction, and as Sharon pointed out, the due diligence process, there is an in-depth loan-by-loan file assessment of the inherent value, the valuation of collateral. So there will be a rightsizing, there will be a certain fixing the problem, should you say, in terms of, you know, the estimated recoveries, et cetera. So absolutely taken on board. And more and more JSTs are engaging with banks on these particular types of transactions. And as we move through the work on the strategies, we are receiving numerous different types of proposals similar to these, where we are looking at them in a horizontal fashion to make sure there is consistency and that the data supports the assumptions, et cetera. So very much part of the process.
Thank you. There's another question over there, please?
Thank you. Charles from Powerless Asset Management have a question. Could you consider a general LGD waiver on NPL sales for a specific period of time in order to incentivize banks to accelerate the sale of NPL?
I'm not quite sure what you call LGD waiver. You mean that we disregard the very low price in the LGD that will be used for the models? Well, we are obliged to implement the legislative text, what the legislators wanted, CRD4, CRR. And as a matter of fact, being the former Secretary General of the Basel Committee, at the moment when we drafted this regulation about models, I know what we had in mind and what I drafted also in Basel, and I am supported with my colleague Stefan Welter, also former Secretary General of the Basel Committee, that knows what we have in mind. In fact, you are correct, there is a small margin for specific situations that permit to be a little bit flexible on the consequences of very low prices that could damage the LGD. But there are conditions for that. Normally, it has to be done for the sale of a comprehensive portfolio, the total portfolio, meaning that the portfolio that would have deserved this damaging LGD is gone totally. So no reason to have some kind of tainting of the other LGDs. If it's not the case, not totally gone, we have to have a supervisory dialogue here as well with the bank, explaining why, although apparently it's not the total portfolio which has been sold, what is remaining is not the same, does not present the same characteristics as the portfolio that has been sold with low prices. And it can be the case, for example, we have situations where banks have different vintages and different origins of the sub-portfolios. A bank that has, that is the result of mergers that took place before. If the bank can demonstrate that, oh, this is coming from the former bank A, and this bank A was much worse than the two others with whom, with which it was merged, then you have a good case, the supervisor, to take into account a difference. So there is a possibility, the margin is narrow, pretty narrow, so we would not take the risk of not implementing properly the legislation for, I would say, a small operation. If a bank comes with good reasoning for this LGD issue, and on top of that is ready to do a very serious one-off cleaning, that then the bank gets the attention of the supervisor. This is what I can tell you on this.
Any other comments, questions? Over here, please.
Thomas Demian from BNP Paribas. I'd like to come back to one of your previous comments. You were saying that risks have to be addressed early so that they disappear. However, by incentivizing banks, notably the weakest ones, to sell their NPLs, to less regulated, not to say unregulated investors, mainly non-new entities, aren't you pushing NPL risks out of your supervisory scope only? And therefore expose SMEs and households to much more aggressive collateral recoveries? Banks build long-term relationships with their clients when third parties will be probably more interested in short-term profits?
Well, I will start by saying that as this is about new non-performing loans, that's not totally the situation that you describe. The situation that you describe is more related to the existing stock for which we can see sales. But we take, for the legacy, precisely, the stock, we take the bank's own plans, and we challenge them to make them credible and ambitious enough. But we start with the bank's own plans. And we have seen, so we recommend nothing. The bank is deciding about the solution. Supervisors should not manage the bank or manage their problems, just make sure that the banks address the problems. In certain countries where the levels of non-performing exposures are pretty high, we can see what we call in our jargon strategic defectors, meaning a number of customers that could pay but do not reimburse their credits because that's the average situation in the country. You don't reimburse the credit until you are totally forced to do that, and hopefully it will not happen anytime soon. So yes, they are probably the first customers to target, but that's the job of the banks to identify, and in general, they know them very well. What are these strategic defectors that we would like to see addressed among the first?
I would just add again, I don't think we have made any obligation on banks to sell portfolios. We recognize that this is one of the tools that they use. And while not within our competence, I know that in some of the countries, because we saw this in our stocktake of national practices and so on, some countries have put in place frameworks to protect the borrowers, particularly if they're personal borrowers, if their loans are sold on.
Yes, here in this gentleman here in the middle.
Thank you. Federico Cornelli, Italian Banking Association. Just to understand, you gave an answer regarding the massive disposal of NPLs. Imagine, we are in the process of having the proposal from the parliament for the new CRR, and we are hope that the Article 181 of CRR might have a change allowing for the correct computation of LGDs in case of massive disposal. I mean, would you be in favor of such an opportunity? Of course, under the control of the SSM or the national competent authorities, because this will allow us to accelerate the disposal of NPLs, avoiding the second impact of the disposals. And the first and the second question is, when we sell NPL, we normally have in front of us two kinds of buyers. The first one is a non-bank, for example, a fund, and the second one is a bank under CRR and all the other rule, having a banking license. If, the question is, would you apply the addendum to the bank, to the potential buyer, again, even if this, for example, has a vintage Radio 5? Because this is very important to avoid, again, an unintended distortion of the number of potential buyers, as we have been able in Italy to attract a vast number of buyers and prices have soared from average 18 to average 32. It is of common interest to maintain the largest number possible. This could be two solutions. Thanks.
I will start with the LGD issue with my past experience, long past experience with models. No, I don't agree with what you are proposing, and you call it correct computation of LGDs when massive sale. It's not correct computation of LGD. This is the real LGD. When you sell non-performing loans, you are realizing your real true LGD. It's as simple as that. So no, I am not in favor of that. If we do that, we kill the credibility of models of European banks vis-à-vis the other colleagues in other regions of the world. They have already expressed doubts about the risk-weighted asset variability of models in certain occasions. We are spending a lot of resources to revalidate the models of the SSM banks, to make sure they are well built, these models well maintained, and that deliver adequate risk-weighted assets. So we will certainly not play games with LGDs. That's not at all a possibility. We want the parameters of the models to be so sound, safe, and we cannot ignore risk by having a reality which looks nicer than what it is. And it's also a matter of level playing field. A number of banks in the SSM countries are selling non-expected, well, non-performing exposures and take the LGD consequences, and have been taking the LGD consequences for decades. So that will be really a very bad move, in my view, for the credibility of the models that we are creating by our twin project. This being said, as I mentioned earlier, for very specific circumstances, there is a little bit of margin, margin is thin, which is left to the appreciation of the supervisors. And frankly, with all the work and efforts we have put in trying to address and fix this non-performing exposure issue, again, a banker which is willing to do the right thing, taking the right measures, and can give us good reasons to use the possible flexibility on LGD, will get our attention. We will not start by being negative and saying no, except if. We will say, okay, let's look at what you have to offer. And we know also that when we do that, we create a precedent, because another bank, exactly in the same situation, will need to have the same treatment. So we will be cautious but open-minded, provided we are still complying with the rules, which are the rules. And supervisors are there to get the rules implemented. But indeed, there is a small merger, small margin, thin margin for flexibility. But again, we want to see, you use the word massive, yes, massive operation of cleaning would get our attention.
I think your second question was complimentary to the question or the discussion we were having earlier also. So first, I would say, in terms of definition, as we had said earlier, the definitions are consistent with the EBA definition. So to set the vintage count back to zero or to say that a loan has been cured and so on, obviously requires it to meet the criteria that have been set out in the definition, and all of our guidance and so on is consistent with that important work that has been done to standardize. And I think, as we said earlier, if a bank is selling a portfolio to another bank, then clearly there's a process that's gone through regardless of the addendum, in terms of supervisory dialogue and also the due diligence process and so on, which would be part of the discussion. But we will, I think, consider the feedback in terms of how maybe we can explain this a little bit better in the addendum.
Yes, the gentleman in the back here, please.
Hi, this is Manuel from Santander. I wanted to know if you could elaborate a little more on the linear path to this 100% that you are mentioning, precisely because of the models, and to know your opinion, in this linear path could not jeopardize the credibility of the models. We've been working in models reacting to the vintage of NPLs for a while, so I wanted to know your opinion on that. Thank you.
So first of all, about the linear path, I think the reason why we put it there was to try to mitigate against a kind of cliff edge effect where nothing would happen, and then at the last moment, there would be a large provision to be taken. So we were trying to set out that we expected banks to be able to do this gradually, and this would be a way that we would think about it. I think it's important to emphasize as well, though, that if the bank is taking more provisions than that itself through its own policies and procedures, then obviously that's also the case as well, and we would be discussing that with the bank. I think then in terms of LGD, it would be about the dialogue with the bank and how those things actually work out, whether they have their own policies, whether they're taking a linear path or whether they're doing something else. Maybe you want to add something?
No, I think the point is right, that when we put in a suitable gradual path, we wanted to keep it quite open, which for the two years makes sense. I think there it's good to keep it open and to give banks the time to consider themselves what's adequate. But when we came to the seven years, we had a lot of discussion with our different supervisors in the 19 countries, and there were concerns if we left it completely open and set a suitable gradual path, it could result in an unlevel playing field. So this is why in the end we decided to put some high-level guidance. Now, if there are ideas in the consultation phase where you say we actually have a better idea of how to specify this, which we consider a bit better approach, we'd be very happy to listen.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, please, in the back there.
Yes, hello, my name is Nicholas Comfort. I'm a journalist with Bloomberg News. I realize it's not a press conference, but since we're at the end of the hearing, I would like to ask one question, please. My question is about the, a potential delay to the implementation of the guidelines. Madame Nui, you were very clear, very clear, in Brussels at the econ hearing, that you will take on, you will listen to all the feedback, you will process it, and if that means you can't get something together for the first, or if it means you can't finalize your package for the first of January, you will take more time to finalize it. So my question is, how much time do you think you have? Is this something which needs to be done in 2018? I mean, 2018 is a long period. And then even if you can't tell And then even if you can't tell us exactly the kind of the timeline on that, maybe you can tell us about the periods of time that matter for this? Because I sit on the outside, I look at bank releases and quarterly reports, and they are quarterly. And I wonder how that figures into any potential delay and whether we should be expecting something which would be a month-by-month delay or a quarterly delay? Thank you.
Well, to be honest, I cannot be more precise that I have been in the European Parliament because we don't know yet how many comments, on how complex the comments will be. As a matter of fact, it was just common sense, so we did it. Before this hearing, we asked our colleagues how many comments we have already received and what are the points that we should be ready to address in this hearing, because those are points of concern. On the single end, it was enough to count the comments that we have already received. So I presume that we will receive a lot, because this is an issue that raises a lot of interest. But I don't know how many, I don't know how complex they will be. We have received already, it's not comments, but a number of legal consultations, the parliament in particular. We will certainly take into account all the good legal advice that we have received to make sure that the addendum is drafted as cautiously as possible and translates the reality and not, does not look like pillar one. For the rest, we don't know. So what we will do is that, once the deadline is, happens, it's 8 December, if I remember well, we will see where we are. And we know that it may take two or three more days to see the total, because a few will come also maybe the day after. And then we will assess the quantity of work it takes to do what we always do through consultation. We take consultations very, very seriously. We publish the comments, we explain why we are taking comments, certain comments and not others. So based on the time it takes to do a good job in drafting the final addendum, on explaining, well, going through the comments, take the ones that we should take and explain why we are not taking certain of them, we will see what it means. Because if we look from a different perspective, what is desirable, desirable is very obvious, the sooner the better, obviously, to make sure that we address the future possible piling up of nonperforming exposures. But it will take what it will take. It's a big issue. We started in 2014, so a couple of additional months would not be an issue. And I was indeed clear in Brussels, because I explained to the people that were in the hearing, the members of the parliament that were in the hearings, that I was taking note of what they were telling to me, but that would be the final decision, the supervisory board of the SSM that will take it. But I said, for this one, the timing precisely, I will recommend, I went as far as saying, I will recommend to my supervisory board members to postpone a little bit, to make sure, if need be, to make sure that we can make full use of the comments. Because indeed, while the timeline is very tight, probably too tight, even in spending a lot of time in the offices between Christmas and New Year's Eve, that will be a little bit delicate. So a few additional months are probably needed. But I cannot tell more because I don't know at all what we should expect.
Okay, thank you very much. We've just been very close to running out of time, so let me close here. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for your comments. As we said, the site, the website is still open for comments until December 8 midnight. Thank you very much.